Please join me in a moment for a silent prayer or reflection. Terry, will you call? Roll, please.
Nicole Cohen, Chair, Arciana Aliar.
Here.
John Mastin.
Here.
Kathy Fox.
Here.
Lisa Ramon.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Fleming, do we have any calls to the public? We have some visitors to recognize. Carol Nowakowski from the LHCEA.
President Ramon, board members, directors, I don't have much to say except for it is time for the bills to have crossed over. So all of those bills that we were looking at in the first half of legislation, the legislative session, have now crossed over. So if they were House bills, they are now in the Senate, and we need to contact our Senator, Senator Borelli, who sits on Education Committee. And then if they are in the Senate, they have passed over to the House, and we would like to contact Representative Biassucci and Cobb's and just keep them informed about the bills that we were looking at in the first half of the session. But since we're all here anticipating a lot of information today, I'm going to cut mine short, and thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Madam President, I move that we approve 4.0 in its entirety with the exception of 4.15, which I would like moved to 4.2.
Second.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Arciana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. Okay, then, item 4.2, we'll discuss the items that we've just pulled out, and that was the approval of travel.
So mostly, I wanted to speak about travel just because of what we're hearing on the news. What are we, do we have a Plan B? I don't know what the thought processes behind our students traveling right now. Of course, always want to highlight our carbon footprint, not because I'm concerned, I want to make that very clear, that I'm not concerned with our carbon footprint. I'm always trying to make it understood or highlight the hypocrisy of teaching our students that we need to lower the carbon footprint while we enlarge our student carbon footprint with the travel that we do. And it's not because I want to deny students the opportunity to travel, I just want to make sure that they're aware of what that looks like. So, and I've got a few extras at the end, and I had no idea there would be so many students here, so I'm glad that you are. But the target is this little footprint down here, that's the world target at two metric tons, says the United Nations, and this is Lake Havasu's footprint, just for this month. So, and then the last thing that I wanted to talk about, and I don't know what John has to add, but I have a concern with the Close Up Club, and I have not talked to Mr. Zemetall, so I apologize. I wanted to call him today, but I didn't get a chance to. But my concern is in the board packet. It talks about the last thing that is going to happen is that the program instructors are going to help the students make the connection to their role as citizens in influencing foreign policy. And I have a huge problem with that because what I hear is, we're going to train students how to advocate on behalf of the United Nations. And so I just want to make that clear because that's a concern of mine, because the United Nations is trying to figure out how they get around our God-given inalienable rights in order to implement the 2030 plans, the goals. So I wanted to just highlight that in the travel and then ask what we're doing in terms of the coronavirus.
Can I ask you, is Close Up affiliated with the United Nations?
No. No, 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 no. I was not trying to make that connection, I'm just saying, this Agenda 2030, the Sustainable Development Goals are weaved into every single thing that we do.
And I would-
You don't have to be officially affiliated in order to be participating to move that agenda along. So.
It doesn't specifically mention the United Nations anywhere in here, but it just talks broadly about foreign policy.
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Mastin, did you have something?
But part of the United Nations, I think I have one here in my Pearson book where it talks about the Universal Declaration of Rights, talks about the children's rights, and part of the child's right is to participate and persuade their government. And if you don't think that every public school district in this country is involved in programs that are trying to sway that, I mean, that's a conversation for another day, but it's, I can point to it in almost everything that we do here, up to and including the book that we almost purchased where it's advocating for it, too. So.
Well, I don't share your objections to the United Nations, but I would say that just in general, that's beyond the scope of these types of meetings.
You don't share, you don't share-
I don't, I do not share your objections about the United Nations, but it's also beyond the purview of this meeting to discuss that.
Absolutely. Just always trying to make that connection for everybody, though.
Gotcha. And Mr. Mastin, did you have something specific to say?
I think I'll just clarify on Mrs. Cohen's point. We have students here tonight who are here to participate in a civics exercise, where they can observe a board meeting, and they have a choice between coming to a governing board meeting or a Lake Havasu City Council meeting. And I guess what it comes down to is, what are we citizens of? Are we citizens of the world? Are we citizens of the United States of America? And what governmental structure then do we live under? And so if we're teaching our students about civics, and we're teaching them about the United States governmental structure, is it then disingenuous to say that they have a responsibility past the borders of the United States, and do they have an allegiance to a government, which the United Nations is not a governmental body, it's an international clearinghouse to settle disputes between parties across the world that came out of World War II. So I just, I just think that bears repeating that, you know, if we're going to teach civics, and we're going to teach about the United States and US history, and the Constitution, and how our government works in the United States, is it not then a little bit disingenuous to be expanding that into non-governmental organizations outside of our borders? And I think that's Mrs. Cohen's point.
Okay. And I would just offer the counterpoint that you can be citizens of the United States, which I would guess most people in this room are, and also acknowledge that you live on the same planet as other countries, and might want to have, maybe you will grow up to have a role in influencing foreign policy, and that that's not a bad thing.
I would, I would agree the way that you stated that it is not, but that is not what is stated in the packet.
Right.
I'm sorry, all that's stated in the packet is, program instructors are also to help students make the connection to their role as a citizen in influencing foreign policy. It doesn't say a citizen of any country other than the United States, it just says citizen, and it talks about influence in foreign policy. It's a very broad statement. I think that maybe some of these concerns are extrapolated.
It's broad for this, but if you've read any of the agreements or the treaties that were in, the whole goal is, the only thing that stands in the way, the reason that we didn't achieve the Agenda 21 goals was because of the United States Constitution. It's the only thing that stands in the way of the 2030 goals. So there is a concerted effort to recruit, if you will, students in our country in order to further that agenda along under the guise of diversity and inclusion and equity. And, you know, we hear those terms all the time, but it's not diversity of thought, and it's not equity based on equal opportunity, it's equity based on forced outcomes. Forced to think the same way.
So are you recommending that the students not go to Hawaii?
I'm not. I'm not recommending that they don't go. That was not my point. My point for pulling it was to highlight, first of all, my concern about making the connection to students influencing foreign policy before they've, before they've had any experience. Like, if we wanted to create a litmus test for the board to ask students if they had enough knowledge in order to actually go out and influence foreign policy, and be able to discern between whether or not they're being detrimental to their own interest, that would be one thing, but we don't have those opportunities. So.
I'm missing the sentence, of having our students influence foreign policy, which we-
It's the last sentence.
Right before Miss School Day's four.
...make the connection to their role as a citizen in influencing a public, a foreign policy. Okay, well, I mean, I would just point out, as I told you, Mrs. Cohen, I have no idea why I got really interested in foreign affairs when I was in middle school. I mean, I didn't even know where Thailand was. I mean, I couldn't have been in about anything. But I did, I have no memory, I don't know why. But when I became a high school student, my class thinks that, not my class, I was called the most patriotic person at Ruston High School. I was so involved in all kinds of things, and that my interest in foreign affairs did not preclude my feelings of patriotism. As a matter of fact, I probably, probably, during that era, enhanced my feelings of patriotism. I mean, I would have loved to have gone on something like this, it would have just been right up my alley, and I'm hoping that there are students at our high school who feel the same way, and probably if they're in Close Up, they do feel that way.
I just don't think our students get a balance.
Okay.
We're not sending our students off to Hillsdale College for any of their ventures. We're not sending them to, you know, to the Heritage Foundation. We're not sending them off to organizations that would teach them how to look through the lens of capitalism, or how to look through the lens of being a patriot, or understanding how precious those rights are that we all hold in this country, and what makes this country so special. So if we were doing a balance, I wouldn't have a problem with it. And I'm not trying to deflect anybody, or dissuade anybody from going down those paths. We need people engaged in foreign policy, that's not my purpose. My concern is that they are not getting the full understanding of what they're being, what they may potentially be being used for. I think Greta Thunberg put that way. I feel like that young lady is being used for an ends. The means justify the ends, we've all heard that term. So that was, under that, I'm not trying to say people should not be involved, all over the world.
Can we move on?
Madam President, point of order, do we have a motion on the floor?
We pulled out, oh, I don't think we approved discussing 4.2.
I move we approve 4.2 as presented.
Second.
Wait, just a minute.
And then we can still discuss.
We're out of order, we're not, we don't have a motion on the floor, we are out of order.
I didn't ask for a motion to discuss 4.2.
We're not supposed to be discussing 4.2?
Well, I just didn't ask for one, so now-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's put it on the floor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have the motion and the second.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the real question was the coronavirus, though. Sorry.
Actually, I was planning to give an update on the coronavirus at the end of the meeting, but I would, if I may, ask Mrs. Walter to respond to the travel particular piece of it.
Okay.
Sure. Madam President, members of the board, we have been participating in webinars through the Department of Education, also Department of Health Services, and looking at the guidance. And specifically, the guidance that we've been given as a district is to review our travel, be very mindful of where we're traveling, and making sure that there are areas specifically that have been identified, to look at that, whether it's essential travel, or if it's an area that poses a greater hazard. What we have done is, we've reached out to our administration, we've asked them to kind of review, and to be mindful, and be keeping an eye on that, and to also look at essential participants in an event that we do find, like with our sports program, obviously that has a really huge impact on our athletes, and we don't want to make any rash decisions, but we may make decisions as to whether everybody who's scheduled to go on that trip needs to, if they're non-essential personnel or non-essential participants. So that's what we're doing as far as looking at that at this time. We have also gotten guidance from our trust, which is our district insurance, and they have provided some information looking at international travel, looking at insurance, because, again, in an event that it does need to be canceled, looking at what insurance and protection that we can have in place in the event if something were to happen. As you all know, you never know what could happen when you're traveling. But those are some of the guide steps that we've been given, and those are steps that we've taken. We do have a list in preparation, again, just in planning, identifying our travel for the remainder of the year that's already scheduled, and having a look at that so we can monitor and review on a weekly basis, as our administrative team does, our director level does, and then, of course, we reach out and communicate with our site principals. And then, again, our leaders who are overseeing those trips need to be very engaged and mindful as well, in looking at any kind of communication. I think we've already communicated some feedback that we've gotten from our international travel group on steps that they are taking to keep it safe. They are very experienced, and the world is ever-changing, so this isn't the first situation. They've had to plan and adjust, and they are making adjustments based on their trips that they have scheduled, and looking at that. So they've reassured that they are taking steps, have taken steps, and will be very mindful in looking at that guide to keep their participants safe.
So we could approve 4.2 tonight, but district office administration, working with the principals, could make decisions about individual trips as needed.
Correct. And participants always, I know when they're signing up for a travel group, you know, they always talk about that insurance and understanding that there's always some risk of cancellation and things like that. But yes, as far as understanding from a safety perspective, if it's not safe, obviously, we're going to be making recommendations, and hopefully sooner than later, but as you will know, it's a day-to-day reality.
I can call for the question.
I would also, if I may, add that in some cases, the organizations holding the events are also counseling. And so that's another area that we're looking at to make sure that before we send anybody anywhere that in fact an event is happening.
Did you have anything further? I think we're ready to vote.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
Arciana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. Item 5.1 is the second presentation and review of Policy EEB Business and Personnel Transportation Services. Do I have a motion on 5.1?
I move we approve 5.1 as presented.
Second.
Perhaps Mr. Murray will read 5.1 for us.
Yes. Madam President, members of the board, it's recommended the board approve the second presentation revision to Policy EEB Business and Personnel Transportation Services. There was a slight, there was a small addition to policy for, to allow for an emergency exception, but there have been no changes since the first reading.
Any discussion?
Kathy Fox?
Yes.
Arciana Aliar?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. Item 6.1 is the award of contract for construction manager at Risk, at Risk, sorry, Lake Havasu High School and Thunderbolt Athletic Fields and Office Security Projects, and Mr. Murray is presenting.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board award a contract for construction manager at Risk Preconstruction Services for Lake Havasu High School and Thunderbolt Athletic Fields and Office Security Projects to Concord Construction. The negotiated preconstruction service fee will be at an amount that is not to exceed $27,200, and a negotiated construction fee of 5% of the guaranteed maximum price, or GMP. Once an established GMP is determined for the project, that amount will come before the board for approval. And there is a note here that there is a possibility of establishing multiple GMPs for the scope of work, since we're dealing with multiple sites, athletic fields, and offices, there is a possibility of coming to the board on multiple occasions, or more than once, to establish GMPs for certain parts of the project. In talking with the group, it appears that we're going to try to just have one GMP, but I just wanted to make that note for the board. On January 7, 2020, the Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One Governing Board approved issuance for a request of qualifications for construction manager at Risk services related to the High School and Thunderbolt Athletic Fields and Office Security Projects. An RFQ was published on the district website, and a legal notice was published in the Kingman Daily Miner. The RFQ notification was also published in the Arizona Builders Exchange, an IMS, a statewide bid service. A pre-proposal meeting for potential contractors was held on January 23, 2020. Seven construction firms attended the meeting and toured both Lake Havasu High School and Thunderbolt to view the locations of the future projects. Contractor qualifications were due to the district by February 4, 2020, at 1:00 AM, or 1:00 PM, sorry. Four vendors submitted qualifications for evaluation, Concord Construction, Core Construction, FCI Contractors, and GCON. These responsive firms also attended the pre-proposal meeting. The evaluation team consisted of Larry Prelip with Prelip Construction, General Contractor Representative, John Simpson of the Lake Havasu Unified School District Maintenance Supervisor, Shane Bollinger, also with the Maintenance Department, Patty Basar in Purchasing, Dustin Zampona, Assistant Principal at the high school, Todd Bodigan at Selbergen Associates, he was the Architect Representative on the team, and myself from the district as the Director of Business Services. After interviewing all four firms on February 12, 2020, and totaling the evaluation sheets, Concord Construction obtained the highest point total. Payment for these services will come from voter-approved bond funds to construct, remodel, and renovate school facilities, and this item has been reviewed and approved by the H2 Group and Purchasing.
Madam President, I propose that we approve 6.1 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have some questions for Mr. Murray. In the process of this, this is just for construction management, or is this for actual construction of the fields?
Well, this is, these are the, the Concord is the general contracting firm who will manage the, who will, who will be the general contractor of the project.
And, and within that, what percentage of the work are we going to try and get done through our local contractors, as we had discussed with them in the bond process?
During their submittal and interview, they did share with us that their intention is to engage the local business community and contractors here within the area. They will provide every opportunity for them to respond to the projects. So that was their first priority, and is their first priority, and that's also the priority of the district, and that's been communicated from the beginning. Tomorrow, we actually will hold a preconstruction meeting where that will be reiterated.
So, so we're anticipating a similar outcome as, as with the football field?
Correct.
In, in local participation?
Correct.
And then, a couple of fine-tuning points on the baseball field. What was our final field depth?
Our final field depth?
Depth.
Oh, depth. I don't have the drawings in front of me. It was three, I think we have the architect here as well. I don't know, it was 300 feet, or 325, something like that?
Yeah, how deep, how deep is the outfield? Just 300 feet? That's a little short of semi-pro, isn't it? Okay, so, so we're doing identical. And then, did we get bullpens on that field? Because the preliminaries I saw didn't have any bullpens on them.
Yes. But we're still, we're still in a process where we're evolving, it's not finalized, and we do have bullpens at this time.
Okay.
Would you mind, for the camera, repeating his answers, so that-
He, he indicated that the, that bullpens will be on the field, and that they're being refined at this point into the design.
Correct. We're determining the loca, the exact location of where they-
And, and the field depth will match what is currently there.
Thank you. Any other discussion? You call the vote.
Arciana Aliar?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. Item 6.2, approval to appoint Thunderbolt Middle School principal, Mrs. Vesta Dagel.
Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the appointment of the Thunderbolt Middle School principal. Lindsay Bitterman graduated from Boise State University before moving to Lake Havasu City with her husband, Brett Bitterman. She worked for LHUSD since 2009 at both Daytona and Thunderbolt Middle School. Lindsay has served the students and staff at Thunderbolt as a teacher department chair, volleyball and softball coach, assistant principal, mentor, and friend. Her commitment to supporting early adolescence as they develop successful habits inspired her work with PBIS and capturing kids' hearts. These programs teach students professional and social emotional skills such as empathy, self-awareness, and communication. This work was carried in her recent Capstone project for her Masters in Educational Leadership, where she completed research on social emotional learning to support students. Lindsay's passion for the whole child cannot be overstated. However, it is balanced by her love of curriculum, assessment, and instruction. Lindsay has led teams of teachers in analyzing new curriculum and instruction through the use of pre, mid, post data. At Thunderbolt Middle School, she has trained the math department to utilize the Galileo data to inform instructional practices and revise the curriculum, resulting in significant student achievement gains on the statewide assessment. District-wide, Lindsay has served other teachers and administrators in how to leverage the data in Galileo to improve instructional practices and move student learning forward. This includes training in the effective use of Galileo software to identify gaps in student learning, building formative and summative assessments to measure student progress, and aligning curriculum to the rigor required of the state standards. Lindsay was born and raised in a smaller, small farming community on the Snake River in Idaho. Lindsay's upbringing brought her, taught her the importance of a good work ethic, community involvement, and family. She enjoys spending time with her husband and two sons at the driving range or at the park playing baseball. As a mother of two boys, Lindsay understands how much students rely on staff in terms of developing their social skills and personal identity. She is excited to continue to lead the staff and students in this critical work.
Madam President, I would like to enthusiastically endorse item 6.2 promoting Lindsay Bitterman to the position of principal at Thunderbolt Elementary.
Second.
Any discussion?
Lindsay is here.
She's hiding.
Do we like going to board meetings as well as baseball?
She's got the job, Brett, it's okay.
Yes. Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Fox?
Yes.
Arciana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes, and congratulations to Mrs. Bitterman. Item 6.3, the approval to appoint Havasu High Elementary School principal, Mrs. Vesta Dagel.
Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the appointment of the Havasu High Elementary School principal. Tamara Yates graduated from NAU with her master's degree in elementary education and another in educational leadership. She holds endorsements in both reading and middle grades ELA, and loves helping struggling readers to become proficient in and learn to enjoy reading. Tamara has been the district Dibbles trainer for over a decade. She has also served on district and schoolwide committees, including curriculum mapping for multiple grades, teacher evaluation 301, and Smoke Tree Site-Based Council. In addition, she sits on the Children's Advisory Council through Arizona Children's Association. Her passion for supporting the whole child has led her to serve as chairperson for the Student Intervention Team at Smoke Tree, ensuring that struggling students have a team of adults supporting them in every way. Tamara has been with LHUSD and Smoke Tree Elementary since 2004. Over seven years, she has taught first, third, fifth, and sixth grades, serving as team leader and mentor teacher to new teachers, teacher candidates, and aspiring educators from Lake Havasu High School. For two years, Tamara served as academic coach for Smoke Tree staff, leading professional development, and working with teachers to share their strengths and hone their skills. Tamara currently serves as the interventionist for Smoke Tree Elementary School, where she coordinated multiple programs, including the EL program, after-school tutoring program, and Title I department. Tamara is passionate about collaborating with all stakeholders to support students, staff, and families in creating the best possible learning environment for students. She is a lifelong learner and hopes, and enjoys helping others grow and thrive. She is excited to become part of the Havasu High team.
Madam President, I would also like the pleasure of nominating and endorsing Mrs. Madam President, I would also like the pleasure of nominating and endorsing Mrs. Tamara Yates in approving item 6.3. I think that she will make an outstanding principal over at Havasu High, and I'd like to be the very first to congratulate her.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Arciana Olliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes, and congratulations to Mrs. Yates. I have a request that both of our new hires stand up and receive some additional applause. Item 6.4, the approval of compensation package for 20, for 2020, 2021. And I will turn this over to Superintendent Asire, Mr. Murray, and Mrs. Vesta Dagel.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the Governing Board approve the compensation package for 2020, 2021. This compensation proposal for the 2021 school year provides the following. In terms of salary, a base salary increase of 1% for all returning staff, a one-time cost-of-living adjustment of 5% for all employees paid by two separate checks on two dates established during the 2021 fiscal year. As far as benefits, district-paid annual medical benefit premiums will increase from $9,019.20 to approximately $9,417.96. Those are district-paid. An EPO and High Deductible Health Plan are available for employees to choose and their qualified dependents. If an employee elects the High Deductible Health Plan, the district will contribute $687 to the employee's health savings account. That's the difference between the High Deductible Health Plan and the EPO. For athletic fees, the proposal is to maintain the current athletic participation fees. And then, as far as classroom site funds, 301, we're going to continue the same structure that, we will disperse that per legal guidelines, distribute that per the legal guidelines, continue to, to pay out 301 on three separate checks during three different dates during the fiscal year. That'll be determined going into next year. Fund 11 will, will pay out all funds based on current funds that we have received to date. Fund 12, the payout amounts received during the fiscal year, and if personal site goals are met, the payout to the percentage according to those goals that are achieved will be paid out per those 301 staff guidelines and as recommended by the site principal. Fund 13 will continue to have, have removed from Fund 13 $106.25 per 301 eligible employee per month to continue current insurance premium coverage. That helps to soften the blow to the Maintenance and Operation Fund and using Fund 13 for doing that. Other issues per the menu of items approved by the legislation, unless modified by the state, is decided by the Governing Board throughout the year, from current year to past years received during the fiscal year. And the funds allocated in Fund 13 to other menu items will be distributed during the fiscal year to qualified, certified employees. There are, there are some things that we can use three, uh, Fund 13 monies for, and we're only electing to continue what we've done over the last several years, or for many years, actually, to help subsidize the cost of medical insurance using Fund 13 for those qualified 301-receiving teachers. Funds remaining after allocations become part of the overall carryforward for the district's respective classroom site fund categories to be used in the next fiscal year for the benefit of all current 301-eligible certified staff. To clarify that, the state usually is several months behind, so the monies we typically are supposed to receive in May and June, we typically don't receive that until July, August, and even September at times. So by then, 301 has already been paid out, so May and June's payment would then be included in the November payment the following fiscal year. Salary and benefit proposals were discussed through a district budget committee comprised of administrators, certified and classified staff, as well as appointed governing board members. The committee met on Feb, on January 15th, January 29th, February 12th, and February 26th, and the backup to this item was provided to the governing board members prior to the, to this date. And I have the PowerPoint here that was sent to you. This is the PowerPoint that we, that we reviewed in the budget committee with, with some minor modifications at the end, just to summarize what the proposal is here before you tonight. So we discussed that next year will be year four of the override and full funding, so we have one more year after this of full funding before the override begins to phase down. We talked about the revenue control limit to expenditures, so you can see that in fiscal year 19, so this last fiscal year, we had $28 million in the adopted budget. We revised in May to $28,518, but then our overall expenditures for fiscal year 19 was $30,830, for a difference of $2.3 million where we're in the negative to our revenue control limit. The revenue control limit is the actual money we receive from the state based on our student count, our average daily membership. That does not include override or carryforward monies, it's just, it's just the basic calculation based on our student enrollment. So if we were to take the override out of the equation, or any carryforward funds, like a savings account out of the equation, we're $2.3 million upside down in the negative. Now, a little bit of good news with that, out of that 2.3, approximately $770,000 was used for longevity, which is, which was one-time money. So if we take that out of the equation, that's not ongoing committed costs, we're at about $1.5 million in the negative when we're just looking at revenues that we would receive from the state in their basic funding formula. Now, with the override, we've been fortunate, we've been able to have healthier books because of the fact that we're bringing in additional revenues from a secondary property tax levy for the override. The, the ongoing conversation that we've had for now several years, a couple of years, I should say, is the fact that we need to plan ahead that should the override not renew, as I showed on a few slides ago, that we're now in year, basically year four of a five-year fully-funded override. We need to start making decisions to help us write these expenditures and, and help to allow our revenues to actually be more than our expenditures. And we are getting there. The state will can, will continue to fund again, it looks like, this, this next fiscal year of the governor's last 5% part of adding 5% to the base support level. So that will produce some expenditure, that will produce some additional revenues to the district, which will help that scenario right there. But then, as part of this proposal, we're also committing ongoing costs for medical and a 1% salary increase, which will, will be forever unless the district changes that somewhere down the road. So we need to be mindful of the fact that should the override not renew, we need to really be looking at these numbers here so that we're not trying to make decisions last minute as to how we're going to erase a million and a half dollar deficit, a million and a half dollar of, of negative expenditures or expenditures that are exceeding our revenues. So we're having these conversations now, and we have a short and long-term plan to address that. So compensation trends over the last several years, you can see that in 2016, 17, the average teacher salary is posted there. In 2020, 2021, that's an approximate average teacher salary of what we're proposing with a 1% increase. You can see there that the difference between 1617 and then now 2021, it equates to about a 19% increase in salary from, compared to 2016, 2017. And then, medical benefits on the right side, in 1617, that's what we were paying per employee, and then there's the new proposed dollar amount per employee for 2021. That, when you're looking at the average teacher salary, that's roughly 5% of the average teacher salary from 1617. So, it's just, it's just something that we've discussed over the last couple of years in our budget committee meeting, that we're increasing salaries, but on the right-hand side, we're also increasing medical benefits by way of increased medical premiums. So you can see over the last five years, it's getting close to $2,000 per employee that we've had to increase since 1617 to the proposed 2021 rates. So at the moment, we still don't know exactly what legislative actions are, are going to take place. We have a better idea as we get a little bit further along now, but there still are some unknowns. We do know that Arizona State Retirement System will increase, that their expected contribution on behalf of us as the individual employee and also the district will increase from 12.11% to 12.22%. So the employee pays that out of their paycheck, but then the district also pays that on behalf of the employee to match. The last 5%, as I mentioned, of 20, by 2020, is expected to occur, and we do know that we have increased the calendar for additional days worked for, for a good majority of our staff, so that we're having all staff back in the buildings on Monday of Pre-Service Week versus coming back on Tuesday, and some staff coming back on Wednesday of Pre-Service Week. That's to allow for just greater use of time and training that occurs during Pre-Service Week. So staff will be paid for those additional days that they're brought back during that week. And then, like I said, medical premiums did increase from almost $400 from this year current to next year.
I have a question about the medical premiums. We'll...
We're not in discussion yet.
We can't?
We're not yet, no.
Okay.
I can come back, I can come back to you.
I'll try to remember.
I'll, I'll come back to you.
This might be a long presentation.
It's, it's only a couple more slides.
Okay.
So last year's compensation that came before you this time last year was to recommend a base increase, 750 for certified staff, 400 for classified. We also addressed inversion. We had about a $300,000 medical contribution to medical last year, and then you can see on the right-hand side is our COLA for that one-time 5%, and we're going to propose that as, as presented here again for next year. This year's proposal, as, as discussed or as, as presented on the action item, we are recommending a 1% base increase, which is about $230,000 to do that. 500, approximately $575,000 increase to our medical to address both active and retiree premiums. The retiree premiums will be just discussed in April because we will have to revise policy in regards to that. But we did have discussions and work session, a work session regarding that, so I, I believe we have a very good plan in addressing that. And then you can see there, there's the COLA recommendation for this next fiscal year. So that's calculated on this year's base salary and the COLA received this year, and then multiplying it by 5%. So that way, staff see, see an increase in that COLA that they would receive from one year to the next. So it's not the exact same dollar amount that they're going to receive again this year. There is a slight increase by doing that, and we did that by design so that these are one-time contributions, so it's not an ongoing committed cost of 1.3 million. If we decide not to do this the following year, then that's simply taken out of the equation, like in longevity a couple slides ago. We just, we remove that from the expenditure line because it's not an ongoing cost of, of salary. It's just, it's just a one-time contribution to the employee. This is a slide of the Gold Plan Employee Premium. You can see there the fiscal year 2019, 2020 on the left side of that solid black line, vertical line, and then the 2020, 2021 premium on the right. You can see the employee contribution or what the employee would pay in that one column, and then you see the employer contribution or what the employer or the district pays on behalf of the employee on the right-hand side. And then on the far right of that sheet, you can see the cost difference or the annual increase that occurs between this current fiscal year and next, when it's, when we're talking about dependent care coverage. So it's roughly $300 increase for an employee who has a spouse, and the $100 range for both employee who has a child or children, and again, in the $300 range for employee plus family. I can see that somewhat, but I don't want to, don't quote me on the dollars and cents over there because it is kind of far for me to see that. This will be on, on the website, and it's part of the package here that's included. We'll, we'll post this on the, on the district website so people can see, and then these, these particular slides will be available on the district website under the Employee Benefit Trust. We put, we post these there every year. The next slide is for the High Deductible Health Plan, same thing, 2019, 2020 on the left, and then what the new rates are on the right. You can see the increase in costs, that the High Deductible Health Plan is not as expensive as the, as the EPO or the Gold Plan. The district is currently subsidizing anywhere from approximately 25% to 50% for dependent care coverage at this time of the dependent care rate. So as mentioned, the retiree benefits will come before the board in April for a future recommendation. We do need to update policies. We need to address PREO, COBRA, FMLA, et cetera, so there are several policies that will be affected. The district medical benefits contribution, so what the district will provide as far as a contribution towards retiree medical. Currently in policy, it's 4,000. We did have just an informal recommendation where I made to the board in a work session of changing that from a dollar amount to a percentage, such as 70%. And that would be, currently, the recommendation would be of the lower-priced available plan, and that's, that's somewhat of a standard, not just in the district, but, but also in cities as well, that if, if a, an employer offers multiple plans and the employer is subsidizing to the employee or retiree, that they typically will, will take the, the cheapest or the lowest-priced medical insurance plan and then offer a percentage of that and subsidize that same dollar amount across the board. So if the High Deductible Health Plan is the least expensive, then they would take 70% of that or whatever, and then also apply that exact same dollar amount to their higher-cost plans. That incentivizes the, the lower-cost plan, and then it treats the higher-cost plan as more of a, of a premium type of a plan. And again, that's just kind of common practice in, in districts and, and in, I know the city's doing it as well. So PREO individuals will elect COBRA coverage until they're rehired with the district, that's approximately that 12-month period. But again, all of these will be updated, updates to policy so that it's very clear and spelled out, and will be reviewed with the board in April. But that is, that is the current recommendation. The retiree plan is here. You can see that in red right now in the NAEBT, none of the cities offer life insurance for their retirees. So the, our consultant is, is providing or receiving quotes as to what that would look like for our retirees, so when I get that information and have that in April, I'll fill in that dollar amount. But currently, this is just a proposal from the work session. You can see here that, that if the district did move to a percentage contribution, what that would look like, and minus the ASRS contribution and what the retiree annual premium would be for either the Gold Plan or the EPO Plan and the High Deductible Health Plan on the right. You can see the High Deductible Health Plan, again, is the least expensive plan, so 70% of that plan is that $8,800 figure, and then that $8,800 figure is also carried over into the higher EPO or Gold And then that $8,800 figure is also carried over into the higher EPO or Gold Plan. So it would be 70% as currently proposed here or just talking point of the lower-priced plan, and that same contribution would be applied to both plans. Any questions?
So we are, let's first make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the compensation package for 2020, 2021.
Second.
Okay. Now any discussion? So we are not, we will not be covering 100% of our employees' medical insurance.
Of our active employees?
Our active employees.
Active employees, we are, yes. We are covering 100%.
So when you said that we would be covering 70%.
For retirees.
Oh, so that was for retirees. So we are covering 100% of our current employees.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
And if they elect to, to use the High Deductible Health Plan, we will contribute the difference between the Gold Plan or the EPO Plan to their health savings account.
They get to choose.
They can choose. And retirees can choose as well. But we're, again, in April, we'll probably really finalize that, that percentage. But currently, as we're working these sheets, for example, it's 70%.
Why would an employee choose the High Deductible?
It's, it depends on their, their circumstances.
What would, give me an example of their circumstances.
If they never go to the doctor or rarely go to the doctor and they have dependents, it would be cheaper for them to be on that plan from a premium standpoint because the premiums for the employee with dependents is actually less than
Okay.
the premiums for the hired, the EPO plan, the Gold Plan. Plus, you, plus you get the health savings account option, whereas a health savings account does not come with, or it's not an option for an EPO plan.
So, so what's the deductible first off for the High Deductible Health Plan?
Say that again?
What's the deductible for the High Deductible Health Plan?
I don't have that in front of me. It's, I can get that for you.
Is it, is it less?
We, we sent that out to all staff earlier in the week.
Because one of, one of the other advantages of a High Deductible Health Plan is the flexibility to spend the money on other things. And, and so it covers some of the over-the-counter things. It would cover, let's say your vision doesn't cover a set of prescription sunglasses, you could use the money towards that. It, it really puts you more in the driver's seat on your healthcare, doing something like that.
At the last board meeting, if you kept that HSA intact, when you retire, you can use that money towards your insurance.
When you, when you reach the age of retirement, yes.
And the HSA goes with you. So if you separate from the district, it's, it's your own personal account. You can take that to another employer.
It, it's highly advantageous to have.
You don't, you don't, like a flexible savings account, if you don't use that money, you lose it at the end of the fiscal year or the calendar year, however it's set up. But on an HSA, you, you don't lose it. It just keeps rolling from year after year after year.
And then I think I know what you're going to say, but I'm going to ask you this anyway. So teachers are, well, not, well, they'll get 1% on the base. But the 5%, would that be like 2.5% twice a year? Or will it, it won't be 5% twice a year, it'll be 2.5%?
Correct.
Okay, twice a year. Why did you decide not to put some of that on the base?
Because, like I mentioned before, in trying to address the, the RCL and the expenditures that are exceeding the revenues, we are trying to, as part of the long-term plan and short-term plan, and trying to allow that base to where we're generating enough revenue so that should the override not renew, that we're not always dependent on an override, that will always come and go or overrides, overrides are voter-approved.
I knew what you were going to say, but I just want people to hear
Correct.
that. And then, let's see.
Before you, before you ask me a question, if I could comment on that, the, the amount is the same they would get if it was on the base. The difference is that it's not ongoing in their weekly paychecks, and should the override not renew, and we're upside down by a couple of million dollars, it's a lot easier to take away an extra check than it is to start taking money out of what you're expecting in your every two-week paycheck because you tend to rely on that. And so I know that the district has been in a situation where we've had to make major cuts, and that's either people or its salaries. So we were trying to avoid that while still honoring the commitment that we have with the override to give them the same amount of money.
I just want to point out something that teachers really rely on that 301 money. And you know that that is generated by taxes that we all pay in Arizona. And a lot of our tax revenue in the state is generated by people coming here for conventions, travel, all kinds of entertainment hospitality, hospitality kinds of things. And now with the situation we're in with the coronavirus, all, a lot of those are being canceled right now. So just, you know, I don't think teachers are going to be able to expect as much this year for 301, and I just don't want them to go out and buy a new car knowing that that money is going to be coming in because it's, I think it's very uncertain, and I just want to make sure they understand that.
Correct.
There a further discussion from the board?
Can we open it up for a discussion from the public?
What about questions from the audience?
I was going to ask for that.
Yes.
Do I, do you have any questions or comments from the public? And please keep in mind, we do limit public commentary to five minutes per speaker. And if someone made your overall point, there's no need to come up and make the same point. And if you do choose to speak, we would like you to use your, use the microphone and introduce yourself.
Okay.
Well, this is a large ride from 2015, 16.
Yes. Okay. Well, Mrs. Ali, Aliar and I were both able to serve on the Budget Committee. And so we did hear a lot of feedback from teachers and staff throughout this process. And I think, you know, there, there might be some sort of wish lists that weren't fulfilled through this, but I think overall, teachers were supportive of this plan and, or at least that's the general impression that I got. I did hear from a couple of people who said, at all costs, we want to avoid a pink slip situation. So I did, I did take that to heart, and I do appreciate the people who spoke to me at the Budget Committee meeting and also people who reached out to me separately. That feedback really is helpful.
Well, this is an interesting, this is kind of a new way of doing it. And I, all the years that I've been in the district, we've always accomplished these shortfalls by attrition. When staff leaves, we haven't replaced them. We've gotten rid of our art, music, PE programs. We've raised the athletic fees. I mean, we've made it work on the backs of a lot of people. And, you know, this, this is a rational way to do it. And I hope that it's all going to work out and things will, you know, stabilize. But I wish there were another way we, we could do this. And the only other question I have is, the legislature is talking about giving us more money, and I believe it's this year, it might be in the fall, but still, I believe it's in 2020, if the paper is correct, is, am I correct?
I've, I've heard a lot of things, so.
I know, I know, I know. But if the legislature does, can we change, change this as far as salary goes?
I, I believe we, we talked about that also in the Budget Committee, that right near the end, we, we did talk about that. We did this two years ago, I think it was, where we came back and amended contracts because of, because there was some recent, or there were changes within the legislature. So I, I think that we, we figure out what's happening. We keep an eye on that expenditure-revenue situation, and I, I think we're always open to having conversation about that.
Thank you.
I, couple, couple of comments. I, I think, I think the takeaway here is that the, the goal of the exercise is to put the most amount of money into a staff member's paycheck that we can responsibly put into a staff member's paycheck. We don't want to be sitting here holding a bunch of cash beyond carry, carry forward, which we really need to get the district open and operating the next year. The second thing, Mr. Murray, I, I kind of noticed in, in your, in your presentation that we were about 1.5, 1.6 on, on the deficit. And then I noticed that we were about 1.3 on what will go away on COLA. Does that mean that we really have about a 250-ish thousand-dollar problem?
No, because the 1.5, that this was based on February, on fiscal year 19 numbers. So when I removed, really had a 2-point-something million-dollar deficit. When I removed longevity, that brought it down to 1.5. COLA is about 1.2 million. We've also done things here recently with increasing stipends for our special education teachers. So there have been increases that have happened throughout the district and, and maybe not affecting everyone, but affecting certain departments or groups because of hard-to-fill positions. But I, I believe when I come back before the board in May, it looks like I will be, from what I'm seeing in latest, in the latest state reports, that I will be revising May's budget upward, which will help because that will, that will shrink the revenue and expenditure gap. The 1.2, 1.3 million dollars in COLA will help because if we decide to stop that, and then we're at a point where we can now just strictly look at ongoing base funding, that will help us. But right now, I, I, I don't, I think we're probably in the million, million-dollar range at this point of being upside down.
And that's, that's landing the override at about a million dollars upside down? Or is that next fiscal year being?
It depends on what the state's going to do this, this year.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking 5%, which would be about 1.5.
I, I would think that we are probably about a million dollars upside down at this particular point.
Without, without the legislature coming out of session with a firm plan?
With, because, because we have about 575,000 going to increased medical coverage. We have about 230,000. So there's 800 and some thousand dollars right there that are now committed ongoing just, just right here on this action item. So I was anticipating and receiving about 1 million to 1.2 million dollars
Okay.
for next year out of this 5%. So we probably will, we probably will be about 300 to 400,000 to where we can shave off a little bit more of that, of that negative.
Okay.
And sped, sped numbers keep fluctuating. They're also talking about changing the weighted limit in some of our sped categories. So if that actually goes through and is approved, that could bring in another few hundred thousand dollars just by changing those weighted formulas. So there's, there's a, there's a reason to be optimistic. My whole approach to this, and I, and I hope that everybody understands this, is I, and not just I, but, but we
As a team.
as a team are really trying to ponder this short and long term. We don't want to pink slip. We don't want to do that. And this may not be popular, but the override, if we decide to renew that or go out to renew that at some future date, we're going to have to be very, very much, very thoughtful and very detailed and specific as to what we want to accomplish out of that. And I think we've established some trust in the community over the, over the years that we try to do everything that we say we're going to do. And we're working to continue to do that. But I have, you know, as, as we talk about this and I present these to the team and then everyone offers feedback, we're really trying to address this from a short and long-term perspective and the way the economy is going at this point. And then you can see how, how quickly things change. I mean, it was moving right along and the sky was the limit just several weeks ago. And now things change. We, we have to be mindful of that and not over-commit ourselves. It's, it's a lot easier to give incrementally than to give all at once and then take it away. And that's not what I think any of us in here want. So I, I, I just appreciate, and the team appreciates everyone's input and patience and understanding that you said, you said it right. We want to put money in people's pockets. We want to provide for our people and give them the resources they need. But I, I don't, I want to avoid at all costs having to ever take it away.
Thank you.
One more thing I think is important to note. So the 1% increase to the base salary falls short of the rate of inflation. The rate of inflation is 1.9%. We, you know, with the COLA, the 5% one-time payment, or actually it's divided over two times, we're hoping that that sort of assuage or offsets some of that cost of inflation. But it is something to note as we go forward in future years and we talk about things like the bond and the override. Just because we're able to give that 1% increase and the 5% COLA doesn't mean that our financial problems are solved for our teachers and staff, that we still, you know, with this budget in particular, we're not keeping pace with inflation and that that does eventually catch up. And so I, I would just like you to keep in mind that, that we still are not quite where we want to be. And the other thing, I, I think I asked you about this the last meeting, so there might not be any new information. But the governor's 5% still outstanding assistance that he's promised to our schools, of that 5%, it was stated that one point, or I'm sorry, 15% of it was going to go to classroom site funds. Any new information on that?
The, actually, there's not, and there's actually some conflicting information with that at this point. It's one of those things I, I, we just don't know. Yeah, I mean, there's so many ideas. There's talk of it being distributed one way, and then there's also conversation that that wasn't the intention of that, how it was communicated from the state level. So I, I, I really just don't know at this point. But to your point of inflation, you're absolutely right. Just inflation alone, and it goes back to our medical situation, and I pointed this out at, at the Budget Committee, that even if we were just to take the inflation money that we receive from the state, that still doesn't cover what we've been having to contribute towards our medical year after year after year. And it's just been, it just, it's been crippling. It's, it's, when you're, when you're getting this, it would be nice to be able to take inflation money and then say, here's staff, here's, here's that inflation money and it's given right to you. But when we're paying 100% of medical for employees and then we're taking that inflation money and then dumping it all there, that becomes the challenge. And I, I totally understand your point, and that's, that's the frustration. Those, that's what I, exactly what I mean when the last thing we want to do is give and then have to take away. And that is, that is just the challenge of, I've, I've talked, I spoke to an auditor just last week, and, and she said, Mike, she said, your district, and there are many like your district who suffer from declining enrollment, but it's not severe enough to where you can actually downsize and, and, and not have to hire back staff because the, it's more of a trickle decline where you have three students over here in that grade level, a couple over here in that school, three, three kids out of that grade level in that entire building, but it's not enough to say, okay, we're going to just shut that class down and not hire that staff member back. And now we just, we just save money. We're not to that point. When we talk about attrition, even that's challenging because our decline is not so severe that, that we can just say, okay, you're retiring, you're retiring, you're retiring. Okay, we're just not going to hire those positions back because we've lost enough kids to now put them in other classrooms. It's, it's just not to that point. And she, she, she said, you, you have the worst decline that anyone could ever have because of that fact. And then from a budgeting perspective, that just makes it even more challenging because, you know, we're, we're, we're losing hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in ADM, but where, where do we cut those costs? And, and that's the hard part. It's not, not as simple as saying, you're retiring and we're just not going to hire that teacher back. that teacher back or that parapro back. And then there's our 100,000, 200,000 dollar savings when we just don't hire three or four or five staff members. It's just, we're not there, and that's, that's the challenge. So, so I, I just, I appreciate the process, as frustrating as it can be sometimes for all of us, because we all want to try to do what's best for each other, but it's challenging. And I've been here long enough to see people hurting and outside frustrated, and, and I don't want to ever go there. So I think that's why we have these conversations, and that's why they're, they're open to the public. I mean, we, we try to answer people's concerns and questions. So I, I just appreciate the process and, and this is the proposal for item 6.4.
Any other board members have? Okay, one last call for public input. Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Ms. Nasten?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Archana Ollinger?
Yes.
Go Cohen?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes. Item 6.5, approval of certified administrative supervisor staff for 2020, for 2020, 21. Staff moving from non-continuing to continuing status in 2020, 21, and 2020, 21 certified contracts. This is Bester Dagel.
Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the attached list for employment with the district for 2021 school year of certified administrative and supervisor staff for teachers, counselors, speech therapists, speech technicians, psychologists, directors, administrators, and coordinators. It is recommended that the Governing Board approve the staff moving from non-continuing status to continuing status in the 2021 school year. It is also recommended that the Governing Board approve the 2020, 21 contracts.
Do I have a motion on 6.5?
I move we approve 6.5 as presented.
A second.
Any discussion?
I was just curious, because this is the first time I've seen contracts other than superintendent, directors, and teachers.
And so can you explain the difference between the vacation? That is stunning for me to read, 35 days of vacation. Am I in the right one? Yeah.
For administrators and directors.
Um, I mean, I understand that it's not 188 days, but between vacation and, you know, sick time, and that's a lot of time off. I mean, I just, I was really, I have, I was really surprised that there was that much time off. So I don't know why.
That.
Sorry. Nobody outside of education gets that kind of time off, so that's why I'm asking.
Um, I complete, for ASBA, I complete our, our time off for administrators in comparison. We are well within the norm of everybody. That's the typical you see, you'll see administrators usually call 261-day employees with those 35 days or 225-day employees, which is really just the same thing minus the days. But, but that is the pretty typical workload. I would say, speaking from the administrative staff, the reality is those are very hard days to take off. And so usually they will, we will, I can speak for myself, will cobble together some days. We all try to take spring break off. That's in policy, that if you're going to work spring break, you have to have permission from the superintendent and then try to take a couple of weeks through the summer. The reality is for administrators, they are really working all year long. So even if you're really on vacation, you're not on vacation. I think someone said it really well the other day, your hat of administrator really doesn't ever come off. But that is the norm of trying to get people to take some time off and take some downtime.
Nicole, I remember interviewing, sitting in a boat, fishing in a lake in Louisiana for, for a high school position. And I was, but I was still on vacation and I counted it as a vacation day. It wasn't just one position. I mean, one teacher I interviewed for that position. And I don't think, maybe they were both in the boat, but I spent the day interviewing people, but I was happy to do it while I was on vacation. I mean, and I'm not the only one, not necessarily sitting in a boat in Louisiana, I don't like in Louisiana, but that's, I'm not the only one in administrator who's done that before.
So, so does our paid leave carry a cash value?
It does at the end, and so you can roll over 12 days. And so there is a paid leave that you can cash out at the end, but the max that it would be, would be what you have your last year, if you could afford all of it.
So you could, you could cash out 47 days?
If you really, yes.
So a little over nine weeks? Because with spring break, we're actually talking six weeks of paid time off. That's, that's a lot.
That's a lot.
I'd love six weeks of paid time off. I know my staff would too.
Well, talk to your boss. He's self-employed, that's the joke.
Yeah.
I got a lot of them.
Yeah.
They're called, they're called clients.
I don't deny anybody the, you know, entitlement of taking a vacation. Everybody needs a break, and I understand that. But it's been my experience in this district since 2015, I've never gotten an email on a weekend. And I spent my whole working life working for free all weekend just to keep up with my job, just to go a step further. So it's hard for me to imagine somebody working when they're not working. Answering the phone is not, you know, answering your cell phone is not working and saying, I'm out of the office. You know what I'm saying? And I don't know what goes on behind the scenes. But that's just so much vacation time that I don't understand how you can be here to effectively do what you need to do. And if you're not taking it, well, then it's really just an increase to the paycheck. But I don't know, it just, it's really crazy for me to see that in the contract. And I'm not going to vote against the contracts because of it, but I just think that it's excessive. It's, it's excessive in a time when we're constantly hearing people say, we're not appreciated, we're overworked, we're underpaid, and then there's, you know, 35 days of vacation plus time off. That's a lot.
And so, and just to be clear, this is just administrative staff that gets those days. That's the only staff that we're looking at that gets 35 days. And so that is all throughout the year.
Okay.
And so.
20 days.
Yeah.
Okay. 35 for direct.
Yeah, so supervisors get 20 days, and they have to take five of them at spring break. But we're just talking about administrative staff. And so I think I.
Principals.
Yes, administrative staff.
Yeah, okay.
Assistant principal, assistant principal staff, their, their contract is 225 days. So they are not able to roll over any of the days.
And again, this is standard, you would find this.
This is absolutely standard that we look at in pretty much, I would say, every single district, this is the number of days that they get off.
So, so what was, you said you looked at it, what was the spread?
Um, I don't think, there's up through 45. I'd say the low is, is 25. But you, you also think about what's compensation for our administrators in our district, and that's another reality. But in terms of, of what vacation looks like, yes, there's, there's vacation, but for a lot of the time, vacation is you work from your home, and that's vacation. And that's, you know, you're not, you're not physically coming into the building.
Right.
I would suspect also kind of in, along the lines of what Mrs. Cox was saying, but even if you're at home, not on a vacation day at night relaxing with your family, it's not unusual, I don't think. You could probably ask any of the principals for personal feedback about this, but not unusual to receive a phone call or an email saying, this situation has come up, a student's been involved in some sort of crisis or, you know, something that needs to be dealt with. And so even though that day is not, that, that is a workday, but they're, they're definitely working after hours. I'm not really worried that we're somehow not getting an honest day's work out of any of our directors or administrators.
I was not insinuating that.
I didn't think you were either. I was just making the point that, that they probably work a lot more than they're really getting paid for, as is.
Well, I'd like to call for the question.
Is there any further discussion? Okay.
Ms. Nasten?
Yes.
Go Cohen?
Yes.
Archana Ollinger?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Roman?
Yes. Did I miss 6.6? I have 6.7 is the Employee Benefit Trust.
Nope, 6.6.
Six.
Yeah, we've got the.
Yes, but I don't see 6.6 in here.
It's right here.
Yeah, I know.
It's me.
Pass it down.
Oh, I'm sorry. They all look the same.
Yes.
Okay, item 6.6, approval of support staff for 2020, 21, and 2020, 21 support staff contracts notice of at-will employment.
Madam President and Governing Board, it is recommended that the Governing Board approve the attached list for support positions with the district for the 2021 school year. This is for the position of support staff. It is recommended that the Governing Board approve the 2021 support staff contracts and notice of at-will employment.
I move we adopt 6.6 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? None? Okay, no discussion.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Archana Ollinger?
Yes.
Go Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Nasten?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Oh, here it is.
I know, I found it too. Okay. Item 6.7, approval to request applicants for Employee Benefit Trust Board trustees. And that will be presented by Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the Governing Board approve a request to begin the application process and advertise upcoming vacancies for two Employee Benefit Trust Board positions. In alignment with ARS 15-382C, the amended agreement and restated declaration of the Lake Havas Unified School District Number One Employee Benefit Trust, or EBT Trust Agreement, states the trust will be administered by either five or seven voting trustees appointed by the LHUSD Governing Board. The trust agreement stipulates that EBT trustees serve a three-year term, and with the restated agreement, may only serve two consecutive three-year terms. One current EBT trustee's term expires on June 30th, 2020. One current EBT trustee will be resigning on June 30th, 2020, and the applicant filling this position will serve the remaining two years of that term, which would expire in 2022. The application process will be open to all interested individuals. A member whose term is expiring may reapply, conditional to the terms outlined in the trust agreement. The Governing Board will follow policy EIC Self-Insurance Programs Employee Benefit Trust adopted on October 17th, 2017. It is anticipated with the move to Northwest Arizona Employee Benefit Trust that no LHSEBT Board terms will extend beyond 2022. However, we can revisit that each year as needed. Current EBT Board trustees are as follows, and they are shown down below.
I move that we approve 6.7 as presented.
Second.
I, I need to say something.
We should have discussion.
Mrs. Fleming, on the agenda itself, 6.8 is the Employee Benefit Trust, and 6.7 is approval of the CAF, CAF report.
You did make several changes.
Oh, okay, well, I just wanted to say that now so we didn't have to come back and have this meeting again. I don't, I don't know if there's some rule that those numbers have to match, because they're really strict about board meetings. Yeah, you, you know, I'll bet you, that's the one, I brought that. Okay, well, then I, I withdraw. All right. Good, thank you. Sorry about that.
Any discussion? Mr. Murray, will, will you kind of explain why we need the EBT to continue even though we've, we've dissolved it and we're moving on to the NAEBT?
Yes, I will, thank you. The trustees and the trust will remain together through what's now going to be called the wind-down process. So because the trust, because our medical insurance, our benefits are active to June 30th, 2020, this, the end of this fiscal year, claims will continue to be, people will continue to go to the doctors, claims will continue to be processed, and then thereafter there will be a certain amount of time in which claims will continue to still pour in to the trust, so they have to pay those claims that are, that are still outstanding. So the trust has to remain together until every claim is paid, and then at that time, the trust would then officially dissolve. And that, that usually takes, from what we're hearing, it usually takes about 18 months or so. Could take 18 to 24 months for that process to get to the point where the trust actually fully dissolves.
Is there anything in policy that says that we have to have five members, or could we have three?
The trust document specifies five to seven members.
Are you anticipating that fewer meetings of the EBT?
I can't speak for the trustees. I, I believe that that probably would be the goal, but I know that they're probably also going to still want to remain pretty hands-on to just make sure they're receiving regular updates to kind of keep them informed of the wind-down process and how many claims they're anticipating as being outstanding. But I would leave that to the, to the trusts.
Why don't you ask?
We, we do have the EBT chairperson in the room, so Mrs. Cox, would you like to explain more fully?
Madam President and board members and members of the public, from what I've gathered in my conversations with our attorney, Mr. Hensley, and just the conversations with the NABT, right now, we're, we've been successful in getting our meetings to quarterly, which I thought was miraculous. But what we'll typically do is, as of that July 1st or June 30th, what we're anticipating is that, it's called incurred but not paid claims, so we'll start seeing those processed. And as those claims come in, just waiting for all of those claims to get paid. And typically, we're, we're going to be just monitoring all of those claims and that runoff or that wind-down, if you will. And the anticipation is that we could actually go to every six months, we'll have the meetings as needed. So we do have a meeting planned in April, and then we have one planned, I think, and it's every three months that we have scheduled. But my goal has always been, if we don't need a meeting, we won't have a meeting. So, but right now, they're every three months, but if we can get them to every six months, then that'll be the goal. And then as soon as we've finalized and we know that we don't have any other outstanding claims pending, then that would be the time then we would hand over the torch, if you will.
Okay. I do want to say a big thank you to you and the other team members, and especially to the people who, the person who's retiring and the person who's, whose term is expiring. If someone is interested in applying for consideration, who should they speak to?
Mr. Murray, I think is going to talk about that.
Yes, as part of the backup, we will post, as we've done each year, where this, where the, it's been, where the trust has been in need of, of replacing a trustee. We will advertise the. this on the district website, on the homepage, so there'll be a clickable link for people to access the application. And then the application, on the application itself, it does state that, where they can turn it in, there's an email address there. They can drop it off at the district office, but there is an email address that goes to Mrs. Fleming, the Executive Secretary for the Board. Or we'll get it, once we receive it in the district office, if we receive it in the business office, we'll just make sure that we get it to Terry, so they're all in one place. We'll also try to advertise that the district has a section in the white sheet that is just kind of dedicated to the district, so we'll also make arrangements to keep it there over the next month or so.
I would like to announce that the person of whom you were speaking, who is going off the EBT Board, happens to be in the audience tonight, as he is almost every board meeting, and that is Hal Christiansen. So Hal, go like this, so they can see.
Quitter.
And to thank you for your long service.
Absolutely. Any further discussion?
Last point, I think, is that, you know, we've had this Employee Benefit Trust for a little over 30 years, and it's had its ups and downs, but I think at the end of it, we wanted to finish the right way and the correct way and the best way possible. And the way that that's done is with oversight and the board. And so as much as we may all not like to see it go, if we give it the right send-off, it's probably a, well, Marcia wants to see it go. But if we do this the right way, and we take care of this for the claims that are out there, we do nothing but honor the people that put it together in the first place. So if you know of anybody, send them our way.
I think we're ready to call for the vote.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Archana Eliar?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Bastin?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. Item 6.8, Approval of Supplemental Text for Lake Havasu High School Math of Money and Math of Money Honors Courses. And this will be presented by Mr. Gardner.
Madam President and Governing Board Members, it is recommended the Governing Board approve the purchase of Foundations and Personal Finance by Ramsey Education in the PDF license format. This will be used as a supplement in the Math of Money and Math of Money Honors Courses at Lake Havasu High School. The Foundations and Personal Finance by Ramsey Education text aligns well with the Jump Start standards adopted by the school board in 2019, as well as the Fourth Credit High School Standards for Mathematics, Quantitative Reasoning, and Financial Reasoning. The units of the text, Saving and Budgeting, Credit and Debt, Financial Planning and Insurance, and Income Taxes and Giving, align with the current curriculum of the course. This resource will provide students a clear and organized set of notes for these units that focuses on vocabulary. Teachers will have updated and relevant materials, including video lessons. The current adopted text is from 1981. The Ramsey text was copyrighted in 2014. This resource also include a test generator and online assessment tool. Cost is $8,899.99, not to exceed $10,000, and this item has been approved by the Business Department.
Do you have a motion on 6.8?
I move we approve 6.8 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, I just want to make sure that we understand, and I believe I do, that this is not a textbook, although we call it a text, and it is not just software, it's a video?
Yes, in the PDF format, so it's printable, and it'll be utilized as a supplement for the teacher to look at the current curriculum and where there potentially are gaps, that they would enhance student learning and aptitude in the literacy standards, I mean, excuse me, the financial standards.
And the recommendation for this text came from the current Math of Money teacher, is that correct?
The department chair as well.
Okay. Oh, and one more question. This works alongside what's currently in place, it's not replacing that?
No, it's not replacing. This will just enhance what we currently have.
And we will have to renew this site license every year? Is that how it works?
My understanding is that's correct.
Oh, so the $9,000 would be an ongoing yearly cost, okay.
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Gardner, if we had to buy a generic textbook, what would the cost of an average generic textbook be?
It would be much more expensive than the $9,000 that we're spending right now.
So-
And again, those would have to be renewed normally annually, or within three to four years, and it would be-
So for a three to four-year lifespan, you're probably, what, $200, $250, $300 a textbook?
That's about the right range.
I just wanted to say, I was so excited when I saw this in my book, and I emailed Mr. Gardner and Ms. Thompson both, and I just said, "What a great day to read my board packet," with deep appreciation. I mean, I'm really happy to see that our kids are going to be exposed to Dave Ramsey. And I have my stack of Dave Ramsey books here that I've started and gone through, me and my husband, and it's really true, we listen to him, he's on our local radio here, you can hear him on talk radio, he's got a three-hour show every day. And he always talks about, "Live like no one else," meaning debt, "so later you can live like no one else." And just with what has happened with the coronavirus and the markets and whatnot, it's so important not to be overextended. And I guess that's what I appreciate most about Dave Ramsey, is to not be overextended, to really live within your means. And most people, myself included first and foremost, don't do that. So I think it's a great lesson to teach our kids.
May I hook onto that?
Sure.
Because we have high school students in the audience, and one of the most important things about having security in your old age, or not so-
Any age, really.
Any age, is you have youth on your side, which means you have time on your side. The way you make money over the years is you don't overextend yourself, and you don't spend things, but you also start investing. Some of you, and you have the money, you have the time for the market to go like this, and then the market goes back like that. And the market always, historically in America, has gone up, 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 up. I didn't start investing until I was 36, but I'm doing quite well now, even with the market going like that. I've been in it for so long. I mean, I bought, what was it, Johnson &amp; Johnson at $10? I mean, it hasn't dropped, it's $197 right now. I mean, it's time. What if I had invested when I was your age? I mean, I would be so wealthy right now. But I am financially secure, and that's the best feeling in the world, to have that. And I cannot stress that more. But don't do what I did, and give up your youth, be in debt, learn the hard way. It's the only way I've ever learned anything in my life, it's the hard way. Don't be like me, be wise, take my advice.
I think we had a comment from Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Would you mind speaking into the microphone?
Madam President, members of the Board, the question was brought up about the cost, and is that an ongoing cost every year? I do not have my notes, and I searched for the email really quick. My recollection, because I did ask the person that we were speaking to on the phone, that that's a four-year cost, and we own these documents at that time. Because my question was, can we break this up into four payments to the company rather than incurring that cost all at once? So that was explained to me. I don't have my notes in front of me, or to be able to reference a whole lot from that conversation, but that does stick out in my mind, because I did ask that question of dividing the payments up.
That would make it even better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to dovetail off of what Mrs. Cox said, the stock market crashed in 1929, and it was bad. People were jumping out of windows, and bad, bad. My grandfather went down and bought stock in 1929, right at, the day after the crash, he bought stock. Just to tell you what good investing can do to you, he never sold the stock, he held the stock. When my dad got married, he gave him half of what he held. My mom is currently retired and living on the stock. So it literally is multi-generational, the amount of money that you can get out of a good investment. And $50 a month when you turn 18, I mean, literally, that little bit of money can set you up for the rest of your life. So it's a quick pathway to several million dollars.
And along with that theme of investment, I would encourage, because again, we do have a lot of students in the room, to also see yourselves as worthy of investment. And so I know student loans have been in the news a lot lately, and sometimes a student loan makes sense, but it has to be calculated out. You have to think about yourself honestly in terms of your talent and your work ethic, and what you want to achieve by pursuing higher education. So I do want to sort of balance out the discussion of debt by just saying that some debt is reasonable and worth the risk. Anything else?
Archana Eliar?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Bastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. Item 6.9, Approval of Changes to Extracurricular/Cocurricular Enrichment Activities for Tax Credit Funds. And this is presented by Mr. Murray and Mrs. Heller.
Madam President, members of the Board, it's recommended that the Governing Board approve the addition of the Jamaica Theater Club, or JTC, to the tax credit program at Jamaica Elementary School. Ms. Heller, principal at Jamaica Elementary, is requesting the addition of the Jamaica Theater Club to the tax credit program. The purpose of the program is to promote knowledge of theater practices through involvement in various activities, events, and performances. Jamaica seeks to involve the entire Jamaica community in immersion and enjoyment of various forms of theater art, used both for entertainment and for education. Upon closure of the program, funds will be transferred to the tax credit all no preference account. Mrs. Heller is here, if you have specific questions.
I'll entertain a motion first, and then we'll do discussion.
I move we adopt 6.9 as presented.
I second.
Any discussion?
I'm just curious why the out-of-state travel would be required. I feel like we're moving down, like, into elementary levels now, and we're going to put that same problem that we have with all the other travel that we have.
Yes, please.
Madam President, members of the Board, so I think that that was just kind of included to extend the possibility of what this could look like. We're in our second year of our theater club program, and this is our second year where we, actually, third year, I apologize. The first year, we didn't have a musical, but this is our second year of having a musical. And our after-school program has extended throughout, they do it every single week, and they lead up to a musical program. The first year, we did one particular musical program. This year, we did two days of a musical program, similar to what Grace Arts would provide. And they're teaching instructional practices of theater, and so production, presentation, all of those different things. Now, do I know whether or not we'll get to the point where we can afford that kind of thing? I'm hoping. But if we did something like that, it would really be to be able to extend what theater can look like for kids who are looking to get into that type of thing in middle school or high school, to promote the arts within our community and within our district. So that it would really just be extend that, because we do have kids who are already performing within the Grace Arts community, but also, I mean, we have, we had, I think, 36 kids in our theater club program this year, so. And that's probably a low-ball estimate, to be honest with you.
And there are opportunities just across the Nevada border, going into Las Vegas. I know the Smith Center is very friendly to promoting theater education, and at times they'll have some sessions there that are very targeted towards students and even younger students. So there could be the possibility that they travel into Nevada, which would then be out-of-state for something that could come up. It would be a shame to have a great opportunity that's very relevant to what they're doing, and then be restricted because we don't have approval to go out-of-state.
So there's no specific target at this moment, but we definitely want to open up the possibilities if our theater club program gets large enough to where we would like to pursue those opportunities, so.
You're very fortunate to have members of your staff who have this capability. It's somewhat rare, and if they actually want to do this, you know, after school, I mean, I think, you know, you're really lucky. I'm so glad you're taking advantage of this.
We're very fortunate. Our staff, in addition to, like, our music teacher, we already have two of our teachers who actually regularly perform in Grace Arts, so they have that particular background. And then we also have another staff member who has an extensive background with it also. So yes, we have a staff that's particularly prone to being able to support our students who have that. Yeah, we're very fortunate, so.
Any other further discussion?
What production, or what musicals did you do that you didn't mention? I'm sorry. I'm just curious now, I want to know.
This year, the musical was called The Grunch, which does not, it's not what it sounds like. It has nothing to do with The Grunch, but, and then the previous year, I can't think off the top of my head, but in general, they try to look for musicals that promote the type of character qualities that we're already presenting within our staff. So interpersonal relationships within kids. I was at a training this year on the two days that they promoted the musical at my school, but they're always looking for something that really intertwines with some of our PVIS traits and things like that we're already teaching. So it usually not just has a performance quality to it, but also a character-based moral to the story, if you will, which is good. Any other questions?
Is there, like, a specific, like, I was trying to look at elementary programs, I think of what cast, drama club in a box, creative after-school theater, your Horizon, so is there something specific that you're using?
You mean, like, a specific creator of the programs, like, producer?
Is it your teachers that are just-
Yeah. They generally tend to look for stuff that's age-specific, something that would be prone to be able to match the needs of the age levels that we, that come to us. Generally, it's second graders and above, because usually kindergarten and first graders, they don't, although we like to incorporate them, they're not always time investment for a kindergarten or a first grader. Sometimes the interest is there for a week or two, but it's not necessarily the longevity of a full year. The second graders by that year tend to get way more invested in a lot of the characters within the plays that they look for. They can be part of a cast, they can have opportunities for specific lines, things like that. So they are looking for something that's very specific to be able to adjust to a larger cast, because they don't want to be in a situation where they look for a musical, and they can only cast 10 people, when we have a, you know, a student body of 450, 500 students. So that's really kind of, I think, what they're looking for, is the broad base of a musical that can adapt to that.
Is it an after-school?
Yes, it's after-school club. Yeah, usually Tuesdays, they do kind of have that push week at the very end. They have, like, two weeks of full practice and rehearsals before the musical. And our PTSO is pretty invested in the program, just in terms of, like, supporting and things like that, too. So we're very fortunate. Would you like me to send you the musical? I can send you.
I would love it. That would be great.
Like the script or a tape of the performance? They were able to send me a copy of, like, the script, basically. Anyone else? Okay.
Archana Eliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Bastin?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. Item 6.10, Discussion and Possible Action Policy BCA Board Member Ethics. And this is presented by Board Member Cohen and Superintendent Aspire.
Going to read the action? Well, maybe. It's up.
Do you want me to read it?
If you'd like to. Okay.
It is recommended that the Governing Board discuss and possibly make changes to Policy BCA Board Member Ethics. Board Member Ethics should honor our oath of office and reflect our district mission, belief, educational and curriculum philosophy, as defined by the Governing Board. If focus on scholarship, character, and humanity is our greatest aim, the Board should revisit our ethics policy, define ethics, and update BCA using the following policies as our guide. And the policies are listed. As part of this discussion, we may want to consider an ethics framework for our students.
So reading about?
Wait, do I have a motion?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Do you have a motion on 6.10?
Discussion.
I move we open discussion on 6.10.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I was, I've been reading about ethics, of course, since I opened my big fat mouth at the board meeting, or the last meeting that we had. And it's just stunning how many different types of ethics there are to me. And our policy does not seem like an ethics policy. So that's kind of why it came up. But what I found, I did some, as I said, I did some extensive reading on Aristotle-type ethics, moral ethics, situational ethics. I did a lot of research on that, which seems to be the premier type of ethics that's being taught to our young men and women. Artificial intelligence ethics, that's a huge piece that we really need to be looking at and considering. Scientific ethics, and then, of course, the ever-popular transdisciplinary ethics. So I just wanted to, and I don't want to belabor the situation, but we just got done talking about contracts. My concern is, is that when I got on the Board, and I know everybody on the Board knows this, but the audience might not, I gave Diana a list of 100 questions that I was concerned about. And in those questions, under Educational Services, a lot of it was about what are we teaching in our schools? What are we teaching our kids? And I really don't feel like there's a balance in what we're teaching our kids. And it's like, so how do I get this on the agenda? When's the appropriate time to talk about what specifically we're teaching? So this seems like a good opportunity to touch or make the connection about why that's important. So I'm going to just read you the definition that I got out of. Dr. Arn at Hillsdale College has an online course. It's on YouTube. Aristotle Ethics is the first one. It's 30 minutes. And then the second one is Aristotle Politics. And the way they worked through it is ethics is a way to live. And to determine what is good and how to be that thing, how to be good. And then the purpose of ethics is to form the character in accordance with the good. And then the purpose of that is happiness. And so it seems like ethics touches everything we do with kids, students. But our policy is not ethics. It's a long list of, you should attend the Board meetings insofar as possible. Like, to me, that's not what we should be concerned with, is this list. So I thought it would be a good time to talk about it and update it. But I know that this has been a long meeting. And with the work session that we have coming up, I think that this is important for everybody to participate in this conversation. What are we teaching our students? And what is it that we're aiming at? And another reason it's important is because there was commentary, I shouldn't say commentary, there was some testimony, if you will, from one of our community members at one of our work sessions, that just completely discredited the Heritage Foundation as illegitimate. And then it was further stated that they were a hate group because the Southern Poverty Law Center deemed them so. So I feel like this topic, we have got to get into a very deep discussion about, again, doesn't have to be tonight, because that's not fair to our kids. There is a difference between discrediting an organization for political purposes, and then denying our children, our students, our community even, to have those discussions that are so necessary to the preservation of our republic. And so anyways, I would like to have everybody have a starting point. You know, I've offered up tons of books and reading and trying to connect with people that are on the inside that have the care of our children, but it's been difficult. So maybe the Board would be willing to, and, you know, the directors as well, to view the Hillsdale Ethics and Politics, 30 minutes each, and then have a discussion. So that I don't want to be the one lecturing. I mean, I'm learning, just like the students at Goodora High School. But to cut off conversation because you don't like the politics of it defeats the very purpose that we're sitting up here. And that's really concerning for me, especially with what I was talking about before, with the United Nations and the travel. And, you know, I feel very strongly that you can teach all those things, but you have to teach about our history so that people understand. And maybe we wouldn't need a Rachel's Challenge if we had ethics, professional development in ethics, student development in ethics, board development in ethics, community development in ethics. Maybe we wouldn't have a suicide issue in our society. But anyways, I will leave it there, because...
If you don't mind me making a recommendation, just a couple of things. So the Board Member Ethics would apply to the Board members. So it wouldn't really address something that you heard from a community member that you didn't like. And people are going to disagree on which sources are valid and which aren't. That's kind of just the way it goes. But one thing that I might recommend moving forward is if you don't have anything that you want to take off the Board Member Ethics, which, as I'm reading it, I don't see anything that I consider to be dispensable. But if you had a specific recommendation?
Oh, I did.
On this, on this first sheet? Okay. Well, in any case, going forward, maybe if you had a specific recommendation of, I would cross this out and I would add this instead, maybe that would give us a better starting point, because it is an awfully broad topic to tackle here tonight.
Well, I can't...
Without specific recommendations.
Well, I do, I do. I had a specific recommendation. I don't like this policy at all. So if you want to go through the policy line by line, that's fine. I was talking about maybe a more important discussion.
So do we have a work session scheduled on this?
No, you don't need a work session for this. I just was looking for a commitment from the Board to actually do some of your own due diligence. You know, it's funny, because this says in here that we will do that. Where is it?
Be informed.
Be informed about the current educational issues by individual study. That should be period. That's it. That should be period right there. But no, it goes on. And through participation in programs providing needed information, such as those sponsored by the State and National School Board Association. See, it's the State and all these organizations that are pushing these negative narratives, that are rewriting history, that aren't telling both sides, that are deeming what is right, what is wrong. And that is the problem fundamentally, in my opinion, of course. I'm not the only one who's adopted that opinion. But so, yeah.
If you don't mind me interjecting on that one. I did, I attended the Arizona State Board Association, I'm sorry, Arizona School Board Association Law Conference this past fall, and I didn't find it to be negative. I found it to cover a wide range of topics. We talked about campaign laws and CTE revisions, and just a broad base of topics that I don't think I would have pursued individually, because it wouldn't have occurred to me. So I did think it was a very positive influence. I was glad I got to participate in it.
Can I jump in there?
Mm-hmm.
Because I attended the same conference with you, and I actually stayed for the legislative agenda. And in that legislative agenda, one of the topics that came up, and I was very surprised at how vehemently a lot of the things were handled. One of the topics that came up were vouchers. And in general, I'm opposed to vouchers. But I'm also the parent of a special needs child. And I can envision, because it has come up from time to time in our thought process with our daughter, that a special needs child may need to go to an outside school or an outside entity. And a voucher may, at that point, actually help that student, as opposed to forcing the parent to participate further in an IEP that may or may not actually be helpful for the child. Not all IEPs are thought up collaboratively over time, the way that they probably should be. The first person to come at me for that while I was still standing at the microphone was not even on the convention floor. It was a special ed teacher who was the credentialing authority who told me that I should sit down and shut up, that I didn't know what I was talking about. Then a past president of the organization told me that I didn't know what I was talking about, and I should do the same. I couldn't offer an amendment in that forum from the, at the Arizona School Board Association. I was not treated collegiately, nor was I given any due respect for my position as a Board Member in the state of Arizona. That's a hostile environment. And that is somebody telling people what they should do and what they should think. Further, I heard, and this one blew me away, there was a black gentleman who came to the mic to talk about discrimination, who was also shouted down because he didn't know what he was talking about either in discrimination. It boggles the mind, the things that went on, over something like trying to cobble together a legislative agenda. And realized that last year, the year prior, I successfully run motions from the floor in the same forum. So yes, there are things that come out of the Arizona School Board Association that I find to be absolutely hostile, and things that can absolutely hurt a child in the way that they form their opinions, the way they push their agenda. I also find it to be a very interesting process, because it becomes very oppositional to where the state may be in certain things. They are looking more at, how do I go opposite of what the state wants, as opposed to trying to work with the state on several things. So yes, I absolutely get Mrs. Cohen's point, where, you know, when we start talking about a school board association of the state, we need to be very careful about what we're promoting. Further, these are not ethic points within here.
Which ones?
On BCA?
Right.
These are not actual ethics points.
Well, I guess we should probably define what ethics means to each Board Member. If somebody's looking at this list and thinks it's a list of ethics, maybe they have a different definition.
These seem to be general rules for civil discourse, which is not ethics.
Okay.
Under any generally accepted definition I know of ethics, general rules for discourse are not ethics.
Then maybe if you told me what you mean when you use the word ethics, either of you.
Let me give you...
What we ought to do, things we ought to do, things we should do. And that doesn't mean the list of things that you agreed to when you ran for school board, a redundant list of statute listed out in a policy.
But this does give me some guidelines. This gives me guidelines on what I ought to do and what my responsibilities are as a Board Member.
Right. And I think they're terrible.
And how to behave ethically. Across the board, do you think all of these are terrible?
No, but most of them, yeah.
Well...
I think there's a misnomer. I don't think these are ethics. They should say Board Member Responsibilities or Duties or something. But by putting the word ethics there...
Thank you.
It's the problem. That's the problem.
Sorry, when I think of ethics, I do think of guidelines for ethical behavior, like appropriate, responsible, accountable behavior. That is what I think of when I think of ethics.
I think maybe it's ethics and more, you know?
And mores?
And more, like the duties. And, you know, it's just not purely ethics. That's, I think, what they're saying. And...
Well, ethics, to me, would be like, three of us can't be talking about something that's Board Ethics.
Right.
That's open meeting law, though. That's law. That's legal, not ethic.
Very close to ethics.
Well...
There's overlap, for sure.
There's so much overlap in everything. I think that this is just a broad word they're using, or you can add some words. But if Mrs. Cohen would like to discuss something specific, I think we'll have to, it doesn't really pertain to what's written here, except in the title.
Do you believe it would be a useful exercise to get all of us to have an understanding of what the ethical concepts are before we undertook that exercise in revising the document?
I don't think that, you know, it's easy to agree on what ethical concepts are, because it's such a broad term.
So a video that you would invest 30 minutes, and a second video that you would invest 30 minutes in would not be time well spent?
It might be. I might have another video for 30 minutes or 15 minutes, and, you know, then we can just go back and forth on looking at videos. I haven't looked at the videos, so I don't know what they are. But it might be time well spent. I just don't think that that can purely define ethics for me, looking at two 30-minute videos.
I just don't think, I think we would all learn something, having a lesson in Aristotelian ethics. I mean...
Yeah, sure. That's all it would be.
How could we not learn something?
Right.
But, you know, at a long school board meeting...
Right. Not now. And that's why I said I understood that it's long. But I do, I have to say that, you know, this school district is trusted with the children of families. And it should be mandatory, that there is some sort of understanding about what ethical guidelines. Because let me tell you, when I go on, and I don't mean to disparage any one of our counselors, but when I go on the American School Counselors Association, and I read a document that tells the counselors how to lie to parents, that's an ethical problem. But yet, there it is. And it's an organization that we subscribe to, and it's one of many. So we've got an issue that we should be discussing. We should not be sidestepping it, or saying it's not our responsibility, because the whole purpose of us being here is to teach kids. But we seem to only be teaching them the fed, ed, spoon-fed stuff that comes from education. I don't see people going outside of what's coming through education. I just don't. And it's maybe because I don't see it all. Maybe it's happening. But I would assume after five or six years that somebody would be like, hey, I jumped outside that box. I'm doing whatever. And it's not part of what people are making billions of dollars off of in this state. I mean, people are making millions of dollars off of education. And it's a cost. It's a cost to our students. So I didn't say anything about the travel, but let me tell you, and I know John will remember this, but I got into quite a fight online with Sandra Day O'Connor's son.
Oh, yeah.
And because they were monetizing our students' data. And this was years ago. And it's fine that she was a Supreme Court Justice. That's great she was a woman. But it doesn't give anybody the right to change the rules, these are the rules of the game, without the consent of the governed. And that's what happens every day in education. Every day it happens. So we should talk about it, because it's killing our country. And I know everybody hates it when I cry, but, you know, this is what happens when you get mad. There's nothing else you can do, because people don't think it's that important. It's more important to go on a field trip, or to go get leadership skills, or to go here or there.
It sounds to me like maybe you want to take on the public education system of the country. So I think just be more specific as to exactly what you want us to do, because this is going all over the place.
So I do want to read the definition of ethics, okay? And this is from Merriam-Webster. But it says, "The discipline dealing with what is good and bad, and with moral duty and obligation." So I do feel, as I look through this list, I do feel like these are ethical guidelines, okay?
Well, you're setting a really low bar if you're going to agree that these are ethical guidelines.
I prefer not to be interrupted. This outlines my responsibilities with regard to protecting the educational welfare of students. And that's actually that very last one that it talks about. As to your point about counselors being told to lie to students, I do want to cover that one a little bit. The way you framed it, I think, is a gross mischaracterization.
Well, why don't you log on to the website before you say that?
Again, I would just like to finish my thought. Counselors have a duty to protect the confidentiality of their students. And there are laws, strict laws, that govern that confidentiality. And so it might not be a case where, as you framed it, that they're lying to parents, but they cannot divulge things that a student has told them in confidence, without the student's permission. student's permission. They would be breaking the law if they did so.
I'm not talking about a private conversation, and I would suggest that you go online and you read the document I'm referring to. I'm talking about telling counselors to go change the names of students everywhere, treat them differently, but when you have contact with the family, you revert back. So, it's not just a private conversation, that there's a whole nother life taking place that's being concealed from the family. That is unethical.
Okay.
This is not a private.
We will have to agree to disagree on that point, because I believe that protecting students.
You don't get to disagree with fundamental.
I believe that protecting students' privacy.
Rights that come from God.
Is the obligation of counselors.
That's the problem. That is the problem right now in our country, is that everybody thinks, oh, you can agree to disagree. You can just take away somebody's rights, because you think there's a better way, but that's not how this country works.
I'm not talking about taking people's rights, I'm talking about observing the rights that are already in place with respect to student privacy.
Okay.
Can you give me the reference?
Can I give you the definitions from the 1828 dictionary, which is what our constitution and everything?
I meant the.
Go ahead.
Referred to?
The counselors. I'd like to see that, but I'd like to read what you said a little.
Can you pull some of your.
I'll send you the link. "The doctrines of morality are social manners, the science of moral philosophy, which teaches men their duty and reasons for it."
That sounds awfully similar to what I read from Merriam-Webster.
Does it?
It does.
And what's your right and wrong gonna be based off?
I'm not gonna get into right and wrong, I'm talking about ethic, I'm sorry, ethics and my duties, and they are clearly outlined here.
You've got Christian ethics, you have Aristotelian ethics, you've got the Stoics ethics. I mean, it's not like ethics is ethics, it's.
Okay. So, I would like to renew my recommendation that if we revisit this topic in the future, that specific recommendations are made.
Well, I did have a specific recommendation that we, that the board agreed to invest an hour of their time, of their own time, so we could have a conversation.
And I will not ask for board members to individually agree to that, but that recommendation is out there, and they can choose to do that on their own, if they so choose. I'm not gonna ask for people to commit to watching a video, because I feel like that opens the door to, well, I recommend that you read this, and you could be referring to a huge compendium of information, and you could say, I demand that you read this, or I'm not gonna consider your opinion informed, or I'm gonna say that you didn't do your due diligence. I do not want to open the door to that. You've made a recommendation of a video that you found helpful, and that's wonderful. We can choose to comply with that or not, but you cannot demand that we comply with that.
I never demanded.
Hold on, everybody. Number one, I hear a lot of circular logic here. There's a lot of circular logic. One of you wants a specific recommendation, another one says that we can't all watch a video on request, and we're here at a meeting that we're compelled because of our oath, we're compelled to be here and go through an agenda, and we're compelled to do things already. So, I think it's circular logic. The basis for any discussion has to be a common understanding of material, and if we're not gonna come to a common understanding of material, then basically what you were saying, Mrs. Roman, is you are not willing to consider anything in this action item moving forward. And let me finish before you start. And I just think that in your circular logic here, and it is circular logic in what you're doing, that you are seeking to not go through the exercise as opposed to being collegial, and this is a collegial matter, this is where we all, as a board, have to do certain things that we may not like, or may not wish to do, because we're being asked to do it by a colleague. And I just think that investing an hour and looking at something does nobody any harm, and I just don't see why we're marginalizing and pushing this thing aside. I just don't.
I might agree to, oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mrs. Roman, I'd like to say something, but I don't think there's, when you talk about looking at videos and asking for a specific recommendation or suggestion for the board, I don't agree with, I don't think that those are the same things. What I mean is, you say we want to change this, this, and this, and then each person can look at whatever videos, and read whatever books they like, and bring those forward, but I think that this is not the platform to take on the education system of the country. So, personally, I don't agree with it.
So, let me point to a few policies, and they're in your packet tonight. Policy A, Policy AD, Policy ADE. Those policies were all done collaboratively, as well as Policy IA, which covers curriculum philosophy. They were done by coming to an agreement of what the base was going to be and working our way out, and Mrs. Cox, you were a part of all of this work, Alzai. What Mrs. Cohen is asking for, she's asking for a similar process when it comes to board member ethics, and we're telling her no, or we're telling her, you come up with an idea or a specific proposal. This is a board-level collaborative action. And if we're not gonna collaborate on this as a board, then I don't ever want to see this come back again, and I wonder why it's in our policy manual to begin with, because this should be open, we should be able to say that what we did in 2014, before any of us were on this board, should be open for discussion, and we should have a common point and frame of reference to start from, and it should not necessarily be a very specific item. I think we're shutting the door on something here that I think could be very beneficial for the board moving forward into the next four-year phase of the board.
Again, I might voluntarily choose to view those videos. That is different than being required to. Can you find anything in the policies that you just referenced that describes to me that my, one of my roles as a president, board member president, is to require my fellow board members to watch a certain video?
Why do you keep using that language?
What language?
Required, demanded.
Because that is, you're not.
I requested.
Then at request, at your request, we may or may not.
Okay, let's, let me.
Correct? Isn't that what the word request means?
Let me give you an example of how this would play out. Let's say we vote, and let's say it ends up being a three-two vote.
It doesn't even have to be a vote. I was just asking if the board would agree to watch the videos.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if it were to be a three-two vote, then I'm assuming those three people would show up, but the other two would feel compelled to show up because a three-two vote meant that. That's, I think, what Lisa is an example.
We're not asking.
This is the problem.
Let me take a step back. Mrs. Cohen did not ask for us to compel by vote. There was no compulsion there. She was asking if board members would, which is a request, view the.
How would we vote on that? How would we?
Why would we vote? Why would we vote?
Right now, we're still just in discussion.
Yeah, but how would we find out? What if we wanted to do?
Why couldn't we all come to a meeting, watch the videos, and then have a discussion on it?
I believe that I said that anyone could watch these videos prior to some point in the future, but that is a difference between a requirement and a request, correct?
You don't have to attend the meeting, but why wouldn't you entertain it? I mean, I'm literally asking the question, why wouldn't it be entertained?
Again, I'm not saying that I'm not willing to watch the video. I probably will now that we've talked about it so much. Now, I'm just curious. But there is a world of difference between saying, I think you would find this helpful, you might want to watch this, and saying, you have to watch this, or I'm gonna say that you didn't do your due diligence. Can you see the distinction, at least, in what I've just said? Yes or no, can you see the distinction in what I've just said?
I'm not gonna answer something yes or no, nor am I required to.
Why not? Okay, then don't, but I'm making the point that I am not required to watch this video either, and neither can I require any of you to do anything.
I call, I move we close discussion. This is pointless, I move we close discussions.
I second that.
Nothing like being shut down, shut down conversation. Thanks, John.
It's getting nowhere.
No, but this is where our kids in school, they're compelled all the time.
We are voting right now on a motion that's on the floor. We are voting on whether or not to close discussion.
Cole Cohen?
No.
No. John Masden?
No.
Kathy Pop?
Yes.
Or Chan Olliar?
Yes.
You two in one?
Yes. Item 6.11, Approval of Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2018-2019.
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the comprehensive annual financial report, the single audit and USFR questionnaire for fiscal year 2018-2019. The Lake Havas Unified School District Number One is required to obtain an annual financial audit because the district expends $750,000 or more in federal awards, subject to the requirements of the Single Audit Act amendments of 1996 and the implementing regulations of OMB. The audit firm of Heinfeld and Meach has provided their final report, and the report has been sent electronically for the board to review. Copies of the report will be provided to the Arizona Department of Education and the Auditor General's office. The public may request an electronic copy of the audit from the business office, and a permanent copy of the report will be kept on file in the business office for future reference. I do have just a very short PowerPoint. The comprehensive annual financial report is a report that just goes into, it's more text format, more written than numbers. There are some, definitely some pages within that audit that show numbers and calculations, but it is an annual report that is much more detailed than the annual, than the annual financial report that I present to you in October. So, just some financial highlights in this 100 and almost 200-page document. The general fund, the M&amp;O fund, the expenditures do not exceed revenue, that's taking into account the override that's in place and any carryforward. So, that's a financial highlight. The Internal Service Fund, which is used to fund the Employee Benefit Trust, had a net position increase of approximately $870,000 over the prior fiscal year. So, with the attention to detail in that Employee Benefit Trust, with, thanks to the trustees and several trustees before the current trustees, and trying to really look into and pay very close attention to the performance of the Employee Benefit Trust, we've had an Employee Benefit Trust firm, ECA, who is also, who was also employed by the trust a couple of years ago as the employee benefit consultant. So, there have been a lot of changes over the last couple of years, and some very intense oversight, and through all of that, the net position of the trust over the last several years has increased, and has been moving in the proper and the correct direction. Continuing decrease in debt from lease and bond payments, so fiscal year 20, just for this time next year, the CAFR will reflect the payoff of the solar debt that took place in July, so that is actually this fiscal year, but that will be reflected in next year's CAFR. But in the fiscal year 19, the district continued to decrease debt from its existing leases and making bond payments. This pie chart was also included in the recent email sent out through the Auditor General's office, and showing pupil funding and expenditures and revenues per pupil. This is the auditor's version of that in the CAFR. You can see some explanations there in the bullet points below as to maybe helping explain what the pie chart looks like and what the pie chart data is actually referring to. So, in those three bullet points below, you can see that, really, the first bullet point is just more informational, but the decrease of 1.5 million in unrestricted state aid was primarily due to a decrease in the building renewal grant funds, that's the SFB. You can see in fiscal year 18, we received about $2 million from the School Facilities Board, and then in fiscal year 19, that came down to about $500,000. We had a few large projects in fiscal year 18, but then you can still see that even $500,000 additional monies from the state for capital improvements is still quite generous.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
On the pie chart, there are support services listed there as well. Why aren't those included in instruction?
This is the CAFR version of it, so the auditor general actually displays it differently. So, in the auditor general's report, which is also a public document, it does show that all of those areas are actually tied to classroom instruction. For this purpose, it's just from an auditing perspective and document. So, the last two bullet points, it shows that there is an increase in instructional spending in both areas, so that led to, that was as a result of teacher salary increases, and then that increase in support services for administration, which was also reflected in the auditor general's report. I think we were about 12% in admin spending. That's also due to base salary increases, and then in both areas, we did have a 10% medical premium increase last year. So, those expenditures also reflect that. In the single audit, this is something that's just more electronic-based, this is basically a, maybe a 10-page document, it's very short. This last year, this, for fiscal year 19, special education was the area of emphasis. You can see there that the oddity, being us, is a low-risk oddity, so there were no findings shown in the audit, which is definitely a good sign. And down that last bolded area, it says, "The summary schedule for prior year findings required." We did have an audit exception last year in fiscal year 18 that was addressed, and we'll show that here. So, this is that slide. So, in fiscal year 18, we had a property tax revenue, as we talked about that here, property tax revenue that was incorrectly stated, whereas the county incorrect, or they did not correctly allocate those funds, so they lumped all of our bond and override funds in one lump sum. So, what we had to do, if you recall, that we had to break out the override funds from the bond funds, and then move that over into the correct fund.
It was not our fault.
That wasn't, but what was our fault was that it was posted, rather than posted in, using the correct function code of property tax revenue, it was posted in other revenue. So, it was still in the same fund, it still totaled correctly, it was just literally a four-digit account, a four-digit code that was not correctly put there. So, you can see there in fiscal year 19, that on the single audit report, it does reference that that was fully corrected, and we have a clean audit. The USFR questionnaire, this is the document that, when the auditors are here, when they do their checkout, when we have our special session here, where the auditors come in and they present, as they're concluding their audit here, where they're onsite, this is their formal document of their findings. So, you can see overall, as they even mentioned, we had a reduction in audit findings, there are areas to improve, kind of centered around student activity transactions, that's where we seem to have most of those findings, and that focused in the area of inventory of sales items, timely cash deposits, after-the-fact purchases, that's where somebody made a purchase before actually receiving the purchase order, so they actually spent money before they were given a purchase order, authorizing them to spend money. So, we had some student enrollment audit findings, where there was timely enrollment and withdraw documentations, enrollment forms where they had to initial in a date, and put it there, put there on the actual paper for when they inputted that information into the computer system. So, as they pull a sample of these different types of transactions, those were the areas that just kind of stood out, where there is room for improvement. So, that improvement plan will continue to train. We do have. We do have meetings several times during the year where district staff meet with the administrative assistants at the site level, and they review different agendized items and training. And then we'll continue to enhance our internal audits as well. We've been out to several sites already this year, and we'll continue to just improve in those areas. We do have, our auditing firm, Heinfeld Meach, is putting together a handbook for student activities and clubs, as well as parent-organized groups like PTOs and boosters. And they're putting together, it's all, it's due to us any day now in draft form, where there'll be an actual handbook that our club advisors can, can refer to and follow, as well as our parent groups, so that we can try to make sure that these, these processes and procedures are always at the forefront and easy to reference. So, we, that's been a, probably a four-month process right now because that takes some time to put that together. So, we're expecting the draft any day now. And then we will give our input, and then that draft will become finalized, and our goal is to use that starting next fiscal year and training off of that. That's all I have. Any questions?
Before we go to questions, do I have a motion on 6.11?
I would move we approve 6.11 as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? No? Okay.
Cole Cohen?
Yes.
Or Chan Aliar?
Yes.
John Masden?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Lisa Lamont?
Yes. Item 6.12, the approval of voucher student activity funds and auxiliary funds presented by Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it's recommended the board approve vouchers for February of 2020, as well as student activity funds and auxiliary funds for January of 2020.
I move we approve 6.12 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
John Masden?
Yes.
Cole Cohen?
Yes.
Or Chan Aliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Lisa Lamont?
Yes. That finishes up new business. We're on to informational, and we do have something from our superintendent.
Yes. So, I do have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our new principals. I think that's exciting to have some new leaders in our schools, as well as noting that we will definitely miss those leaders who are leaving. And so, they are not being replaced, but they are certainly being followed, having people follow their large footprints. I also would like to mention that Dr. Stone, who is your new superintendent for 2020, 21, will be here on March 23rd after spring break and will be joining us in several of the activities that we're doing. And then finally, I would like to give you an update on what we're doing with the, with the coronavirus information. Aggie Walter, Dr. Walter, or Mrs. Walter, sorry, is our coordinator for that at the district level, and she has been in constant contact, and I'm, I'm sure that you may be aware that we're constantly inundated with information. We get that from the Mojave County Health Department, from the Arizona Department of Health Services, ADE, the trust, everybody is sending us information. We actually sent out a parent communication back in January, giving them reminders about what's happening, reminding people about our policy on handwashing, all of that. And then we have information that was posted on the website starting from that time. Our nurses are completely involved with this. We are sharing resources at the sites. We have created, and you have a couple of examples of handouts, but we have created posters. Again, Mrs. Walter's department put those together, and they're posted at the school sites and classrooms, et cetera. And we have recommendations for students because the main thing is prevention, is to keep yourself sanitized, to not be exposed. We also are trying to emphasize greatly that if people are ill, that they please stay home and not come to work. One of the area, other areas that we've been working with, and then Mr. Murray and Mr. Heston in the warehouse have been working on, is the other side, which is keeping everything clean. We did send out information, the, actually, things like the wipes are not effective because they evaporate too quickly. And so, we do have a cleaning protocol, and our cleaning products are certified, but they have to be sprayed, they have to sit for 10 minutes, be wiped, et cetera. So, there are some protocols for cleaning for the virus, and we are implementing those and have a plan to do some additional cleaning of all contact surfaces. The same thing is true for transportation with the bus and all contact services. And then just generally trying to keep track of things. At this point in time, there are no verified cases in Mojave County, and we're hoping that that stays that way. But I think as Mrs. Walter has repeatedly reminded me, we are past the point of containing this virus. And so, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. We have also begun and appreciate Mrs. Fesseldeagle and her team in looking at, should there be the unlikely event that we would have to close a school? Are there ways that we could conduct instruction online for students, or at least post resources for students so they could continue their education? The other area of focus has been with all of our travel. That came up earlier. Again, Mrs. Walter has been collecting all of the information about the travel. We have been alerting, and I would, again, appreciate Mr. Krieger for following up, particularly with all the athletic travel, in areas that have had exposures and looking at where we're going to be, what teams we're going to interact with, et cetera. I think the, the biggest thing is, is to be aware that places that have a lot of contact are high-risk places. And so, when we're talking about going to Disneyland, or going to a theater event, or, you know, even some of the sporting events, those are, are places where students are highly at risk. And so, we are stressing to all of our supervisors, club supervisors, et cetera, that they need to be very thoughtful about student travel right now. So, have I missed anything? So, we do have information also on staff travel. So, again, we want to make sure that our staff are healthy. The other things that we are tracking is our student attendance, as well as our staff attendance. And so, if we see any upticks, the nurses are working on that, as well as our site staff. We actually, in tracking our district attendance, we had a really bad attendance month in December because the regular flu was really severe. And so, we have just as much concern about the regular flu, but it seems, if I, if I may say this, the media has created a lot more fear about the coronavirus. And so, that seems to be on everyone's mind. If you have any questions on that information?
I would follow up with, if we have a plan in place to provide instruction for, for students in the unlikely event that we would have to close schools, I would also be interested in seeing a plan to provide meals to the people who would, who would miss out on it if there isn't a school day.
Actually, that is something that Mrs. Walter has been working on, and Taher is very aware, looking at how much food do we, do we normally have on hand, et cetera. So, that has been a part of it.
We've also reached out to our community partners that do some of the meals for the weekend programs, and they're looking at what they can do in the benefit of school closures. So, we've reached out to Parks and Recs as well, looking at programs and understanding how that would impact our family and our community.
Okay. I should have known you would have already thought of that.
And we, Mrs. Walter and I have a meeting on Thursday with Taher to address that very subject for food, food service.
Excellent. So, nothing else from our directors on information? And then what about our board members?
I would just highly recommend everybody to go out and read the New American. And there's a special, a special edition all on education from the New American called Rescuing Our Children. It's very dead.
And anything from any advisory committees? I don't think we have any here today, anyway. Okay. Any additional calls to the public? Okay. Board suggestions for future items?
I would like to see us revisit, at the very least revisit 6.1 in its entirety at a future board session, whether that be a regular meeting or a work session. I would prefer it to be a work session. I'd prefer it to be in April or May.
Did you, did you say 6.1 or 6.11?
6.10.
6.10.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Any questions from the media? No? All right. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
John Masden?
Yes.
Cole Cohen?
Yes.
Chan Aliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Lisa Lamont?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.
And I didn't mean to imply Mrs. Mulligan had big feet.
I thought about making that joke, but I'm like, uh.